I call seven, it says seven P. M., and I'll call the regular meeting of the Waverly City Council to order. And Carla, if you would call the roll, please.
Bergen.
Present.
Drinkow.
Here.
Angus.
Here.
McKenzie.
Here.
Raffi.
Here.
Share.
Present.
Waldstein.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I entertain a motion to, for that.
Move approval of the agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on agenda from January eighth meeting? Or, I'm sorry. Moved ahead one. Any, yeah, any, any items on the agenda that need discussed before vote? Hearing none, voice vote, please. All in favor say a yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Agenda is presented, is, is carried. Approval of the minutes from the January fourth special pre-budget meeting. I entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Any council discussion? Hearing none, all, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Approval of the January fourth minutes are approved. At this time, I entertain any comments from the, from the public for items that are not on the agenda.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Members of the Waverly City Council and the public at large. My name is Travis Tolliver. I serve as the Executive Director for the Waverly Chamber of Commerce and Main Street Program. And on behalf of the 250-plus business members and individual investors of the chamber, I wanted to take this opportunity to mention three things tonight. One, Happy New Year. We are really excited for 2018 and certainly under our new leadership. Secondly, want to welcome our newly elected officials. A couple of you have had the opportunity to come over to the chamber and meet with myself and the team. And a couple of you looking forward to scheduling that with real soon. And lastly, just wanted to say thank you for your service to our community and your leadership. We really do appreciate it. On behalf of the business community, we know that you make a lot of hard decisions throughout the year, and I'd just like to come by and say thank you for, for doing that on our behalf. The, the chamber enjoys a very positive and strong relationship with the council, with department heads and city staff. We look forward to our continued partnership on different projects such as the DOT Bremer Avenue Rebuild Project, which will be enduring the second half of next, this year, later in the spring. And also all of our community events and initiatives that make Waverly a great place to live. I look forward to presenting to you in greater detail our accomplishments in 2017 and what we have on the docket for 2018 and the upcoming budget meetings, which are going to be great. But for now, just let me say thank you again, and let's make 2018 a great year for Waverly. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we get into the consent calendar, Adam Folkert's our guest council person. I welcome you back.
Thank you.
Hope you get something out of tonight's meeting, maybe a comment or two at the end, and we'll go from there. Next item on the consent calendar is, or on the agenda is the consent calendar. Item number one is a Class C liquor license for Joe's Nighthawk. Item number two, a Class C liquor license for the Waverly Area Veterans Post. And item number three is all the cash disbursements for December 2017. Entertain a motion, please.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discuss, council discussion on, on the consent calendar? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Consent calendars is approved. Tabled items. Item number G. First of all, we need a motion to bring it off the table. Motion and second, please.
I will move to bring item, or Resolution 1803 off the table to continue discussion.
All right.
I will second.
All right, thank you. Tabled items number one is Resolution 1803 authorizing eminent domain for the acquisition of real property for the Cedar River Parkway East Project.
We have to vote on the.
Yeah, we have to vote on the table.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Those in favor to bring it off the table, say yes, please.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, now we're back to Resolution 1803 authorizing eminent domain for the acquisition of real property for the Cedar River Parkway East Project. Motion, please.
It already has a motion from previous, I don't know that we have to have another motion on it because it was motioned and seconded prior to this.
Okay.
Being tabled, so I think it's discussion.
I'll open it up for discussion, please.
I have a couple of questions if I, if I could, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Basically, Mr. Werder, I, I think this is probably more directed to you or, or, or to Mr. Bronner. What, what percentage of the total land that we're acquiring for the Cedar Valley, Cedar Valley Parkway is land that we would be acquiring through eminent domain? And what part of it is that we have through contracts? Is about 60%, 40%?
Rod, could you speak into your mic a little better, please?
Pull this up a little bit more. The, the reason I'm asking is, is when you look at the number of parcels, obviously, the majority of the parcels were parcels that we've negotiated a price to. And there are only four or five parcels that we were looking at, starting an eminent domain proceeding. And I was kind of under the understanding that most of the land that we had to acquire was being acquired actually through a negotiated agreement. But I was looking at some of the, the prices that we're looking at, and it looked to me like maybe quite a bit of the land was actually being acquired through these eminent domain proceedings.
I think the largest parcel is being acquired through condemnation, if we need to go that far in the process. And that's the eight acres that was, would be used for the borrow site.
Okay.
So that's the largest parcel. Otherwise, they're all just right-of-way acquisitions, and so you look at the lineal length of those. We're not going very wide. We're just doing the right-of-way width and the temporary easements other than that, that borrow site. So we've got, we've got nine property owners and I think 11 parcels, and so we're down to five parcels and four property owners.
So if, if we did not go forward with doing the construction, or we, we, we voted not to go forward with it, where would that leave us with the eminent domain proceedings? I, I know there has to be a, an imminent kind of characterization of that. It's not something you can do and, and then hold off doing the construction for five or six years in the future. Would we just have to, to basically drop them?
Well, I believe that, that you're correct, that if you, if you decided to say, we're going to go do it next year, we're going to start next February, that we would still be able to use that process this year to do the acquisitions. If you said it was going to be five to 10 years, that probably raises more questions about whether it's a proper use of the eminent domain.
Okay, all right. And then one other final question. Sorry, I don't mean to monopolize the discussion here, but, and this is really more with financing. This is just really a, a personal interest question, and probably, probably James would be the more appropriate person to answer this. I saw in, in the discussion that a lot of the financing or the, the, the general obligation bonds would be paid off using, in part, TIF funds. And is, is this property currently in a TIF district, or would we have to create a TIF district for this property?
We had the ends of it already in the TIF district, and we have added the corridor into the TIF district.
Okay, so that's already been done.
It is in a TIF district.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill, just to follow up, since some of these properties are eligible for eminent domain, are, are these properties where the owners are resisting selling? Or they just want to get into a conversation about it before they make a decision?
Well, keep in mind that, that all of them realize that this project's been on the books for quite a while, and that it's, it's a thing, it's a project that very likely will go through. And so they're really discussing with us what they think the damages or the value are. It, it's just a, it's a value difference of opinion.
And negotiations can continue.
They can continue up to the day before the hearing or the day of the hearing, so.
So eminent domain isn't a foregone conclusion on any of these necessarily?
Completion of the process, isn't it? In fact, there's, we're waiting for an appraisal on one property, and another party is waiting for an appraisal on the other property, and we'll have negotiations when those happen. We just need to get the process started, and then we can stop it at any time.
Once again, for the public, this, we're not, this is, we're just dealing in land. We're not dealing with any structures or houses.
There are no structures.
Might be a fence to move or something, as I understand it, but nothing of any other consequence.
Boundary fence will turn into a road, is what.
Any other council discussion?
I know I've voiced some hesitation, I guess, on where the project fits and priorities, that type of thing, but I'm getting more comfortable, I guess, as the discussion and the information that James has been able to provide on valuations, those type of things. So I just see this as a very necessary part to be ready for bids coming back in February. And I certainly hope, open negotiations get us to a resolution. I think we need to have this in place just in case.
I think that's kind of our ultimate goal as well. It's not something we want to do, but to have that possibility if we need to makes this a little easier. I think we are close on the number of properties, and some, again, we're just waiting on information to get to that point of being able to negotiate further. It has been on the books for quite a long time. We found documents from 1970s where the DOT had said, this is a bypass we think would be good before it was even in the city limits. So it does go that far back as far as the planning process, the comp plans. It's just, we finally have a mechanism to pay for it, which is nice to be able to do that. And as we get deeper in the budget, of course, we'll have further discussions, and we're hopeful that the bids come in where we'd like to see them as well, or that'll raise another issue. So we're certainly not cruising through this. This is going to be multiple steps going forward yet. This is just a good one to be able to get out of the way so that we can proceed. And as we got into this a little deeper, we realized this is a lot more cumbersome process than you would initially think from the dates, the timing, the mailing of documents, the recording of documents. It's a lot, and it should be, but it is, and it definitely will be quite the process if we get this done. So again, timing is just an issue we're coming more and more aware of, that it's, it is a timing issue now, so.
This is a little bit of a tangent, but I guess I would like to suggest that sometime for a study session, we put eminent domain on, on that as a, on the agenda as a topic. I understand that there are more than a few cities who actually start these processes with eminent domain just to level the playing field, so to speak, with regard to negotiation and fair market price and that sort of thing. So I, I'd just like to see us learn more about that and be, be well informed about it.
Good for the public to learn more about it, too.
Any other council discussion? If not, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this process? Roll call vote on this, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
No.
Angus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Share.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to one. Onto the next item is regular business. Review of Waverly Municipal Electric Utility 2018 adopted budget. Understand Casey from the utilities as the prime presenter?
That is correct.
Very good, thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, staff, and audience. For those of you that don't know me, I am Casey Lewis, the Director of Finance at Waverly Utilities. I'm going to start tonight with the Waverly Municipal Electric Utility 2018 budget. We have great news for 2018. There will be no rate increases. Revenues include a 1% increase in kilowatt hour sales based on an increase in usage when compared to 2017. The main driver for this increase is due to a temperate 2017. Some of our major expense assumptions for 2018, we included a 2% overall increase in purchase power costs. However, early predictions from MEAN show that we may end up seeing a 0.7% decrease in purchase power costs. This will depend greatly on the weather and how MEAN ends their fiscal year in March of 2018. We did see an increase in health insurance rates of 16%. We priced another option, but it ended up being more expensive than what we currently had. The rest of the increases are general increases, and we projected those to be at 2%. Notable projects for 2018 that are in the capital budget include 665,000 for distribution improvements for new or replacement services, 570,000 to replace the switchgear at the Southload Center that was originally installed in the 1970s, 450,000 for replacement of a couple bucket trucks that were originally budgeted for replacement in 2017, but we were able to push off until 2018, 465,000 for the implementation of the Coggedale billing software for the electric billing that we will be bringing in-house in July, 360,000 for capital projects in the Luiza and WS4 coal plants that we are joint owners in, and 163,000 for the Bremer, Bremer Avenue street light replacements during the reconstruction project. For the Waverly Communications Utility, we aren't able to share a lot of information due to confidentiality under Iowa Code, Chapter 22.7, Paragraph 6. This paragraph allows us not to share this information with our competitors. As agents of the city, I encourage the Honorable Mayor or any member of the city council to visit Waverly Utilities and discuss this budget with Daryl and I. We do plan to continue to install new customers, and we are currently on pace to meet our projections and business plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Casey from the council?
I have a question. Oh, go ahead, Brian.
Well, I noticed that in previous budgets, there was money set aside for vehicle replacement, but there was no money set aside this year?
There is money set aside for the two aerial bucket trucks.
Right, sorry, added to the vehicle replacement fund.
That is correct, because we have reached the max that we need to have in that fund.
But in future years, we'll be adding to it once we spend.
That is correct.
Okay.
I just wondered if you could talk a little bit more about the Coggedale price tag. And it's, it's a big one. If you could help us understand a little bit better what that, what that all entails.
Kurt's kind of leading this project, so I'm going to let him.
I'm Kurt Atkins, Waverly Utilities. I'm the Director of Business Operations. The Coggedale billing system that we're looking at is a replacement for the electric portion of the Summit billing system that's currently used to generate a city Waverly bill. What we'll be doing is we'll be combining the telecommunications billing plus the electric billing together in July. It's been about a year-long process in developing this, the software system with our, our vendors that we've been working with.
Is it the software alone that you, that is included in that amount, or are there expenses as well?
It's mostly the software that's involved with it. We do have consultants, though, that, I mean, it's, the data migrations that have to take place between the old billing system and the new billing system is something that we can't do in-house. So a majority of it is the software system and then, then the labor to do that.
And is there an annual fee then that goes on after that?
There'd be what they would call a maintenance fee.
Yeah.
Nowhere in that ballpark of range of price, but it's just a software maintenance fee that would be applicable.
I mean, there's going to be some efficiencies by taking it on yourself versus the current process where the city puts that in with all the other services, those type of things? Is there another driving reason why we're making the change?
Well, we've done a number of, just reach out to our community to see what customers may favor for the type of bills that they like to see, which kind of got the ball started on this a few years ago. A lot of customers, most customers like to see a one-bill format. Our capabilities with the Coggedale system will have a capability to do a two-bill format, so if you wanted to split your telecom utility bill from your electric utility bill, we can do that by choice. We do have, as more aligned for the streamline of processes, we, we have payment options that maybe currently aren't offered, like credit card payments, payment online, bill presentation online. Those kinds of things are the things that the Coggedale system can offer that we currently don't have with the current billing system. So that would be probably something more aligned with what, what customers are asking for today.
Get us closer to online, view what are usages, those type of things, too, or?
Correct, yep. There'd be avenues there for, in the near future of having that real-time instance of seeing what your usage is at your house. That would be one capability that would come down the line, but it would be also just to be able to see your bill in a whole setting.
So Kurt, if we understand this correctly, the, what we're currently getting a bill from the city and one from utilities, and in the future, we're going to get one bill with all of that combined, is that right?
We would have the, combined with electric and the telecom utility together, yes.
One bill.
Yes, yep.
But not water and sewer on that bill? Or is that a?
That's something you'll have to decide as council. That's one of the things we'll be bringing to you during the budget process, is do you want to look at possibly moving our watering utility to Waverly Utilities to have all utilities in one centralized location for the public itself? And there's some pros and cons. We started to get into his staff to kind of look at that possibility, but that'll be something we'll have to kind of look at budget. The impact of the revenue we will lose from that, the possibility of movement, what the issues are there, and I know they're needing an answer on that eventually, too, because that also factors into some of the Coggedale system. But that is something we will be addressing towards the end of the month, and I will have something out to you shortly, kind of listing out a lot of that for you.
But that is something the Coggedale system would be capable of.
Absolutely.
And are there some staff shifting that's going to happen even without the water and sewer, but?
I don't think without the water or sewer it would affect us primarily. It would be more of internal.
We're fully, we're fully staffed right now, correct.
Any other questions from the council?
Just one that's come up kind of regularly and just talking about the, the payment, low taxes, transfers to the city, some of the money that comes into the city or gets passed through the city, the payment to the W. Kind of address those, just to clarify those for the public.
You're on Wenzel with Waverly Utilities, and you wondered why all three of us were here? In case different areas came up. Pilot fees, not much change from last year. The W payment, of course, that was a CAT grant that, that happened many years ago, and I think that the city had to come up with matching grants to get the state funds for that project. And the documentation I've read said that prior council, prior Board of Trustees agreed to this arrangement where the utilities would put up 1.8 million towards this project, but they would pay it to the city. Because that's the only way we could transfer funds out of the organization, was to transfer it to the city, let the city do with it what they desired. And the backing of that, that most people don't realize, is that the W pays us 100,000 a year in a check that is to buy renewable energy. So it's a $1.8 million push to the city that pushes to the W, and it's a $1.8 million push from Whortburg to Waverly Utilities to purchase renewable energy. So that hits that.
Just a couple ones that come up fairly often in terms of that. How, how much longer are we on that?
2022 or 2023?
2023.
2023.
I don't know, the five years, then, so.
I was wondering, too, if somebody could talk about just what, what's gone into your recommendations for wage increases?
We have a union contract, so I think the union contract this year is at 2.75, and non-union employees are eligible up to 3%. That you were looking for.
And your recommendations are all either at or pretty close to that, correct?
Correct, that's budget guidelines we stay within.
So I'm looking at the Waverly Communication Utilities numbers, and I'm looking at your revenues in at like 2.55 million, and your expenditures is 2.43 million, which means there's an overage of about 1. there's an overage of about 116,000. 116,000 is the numbers that I'm reading here. That seems high relative to the amount of that you're bringing in. It looks like it's 4.7% over. Are we accruing balance funds for a reason? Why is that, why is there such a disparity between like your revenues and your expenditures?
For 2018?
For the, yes, for the budget 2018.
Here's our, here's our.
You'd have to take a deeper dig into the finances and see when the interest and principal payments start to kick in.
Okay.
So we need to drive net income to make those payments that you're not seeing on that form.
So are those payments coming out of the fund balance or is that included in part of your expenditures?
Fund balance being the 4.6 million?
So I'm looking at, I don't know which number page this is, but you have the beginning fund balance and your ending fund balance, your ending fund balance is like 215, 227. That number's kind of growing over time, and I'm wondering, are we gathering money for a purpose or, and what is that purpose?
Yeah, if you look at the long-term business plan, we keep, set aside amounts for, amounts for replacement of servers and vehicles and test equipment for technicians. So we will have capital pools of money as we go forward that we need to recapture. But this would be, we're 18 months into operation, so we've just finished our draws on our bank notes, so we can't draw any more cash from those.
Okay.
So all expenditures must now come out of the revenue portion.
Okay.
When you look at that fund balance, it's not a lot different than what we do here at the city as well. And you see when they started up, they had almost no fund balance whatsoever, so you have no cushion for any kind of unforeseen issues that may occur. When you look, the percentage is less than 10% they're carrying for a fund balance compared to their expenditures. We carry well over 25, as recommended by GAZBEE when you look at GFoa, because we have a fourth of the year we receive no revenue from taxes coming, and so we have to cover that 25% with fund balance. They'll be in that same situation hopefully some days they become more profitable and stable. And so that's kind of another thing, when you look at that, that it is building, but gradually, and that point, you'll get to a fund balance, it's acceptable, and you'll start to see that level off.
So what we're trying to do is here is build a buffer so that we have some wiggle room in our budgeting.
Correct, and you'll see in the bank notes, we have to reach a certain percentage of 1.1, I believe it is, income to expenses before we could ever borrow any more money should we need to borrow money in the future. So we have thresholds and criteria that we need to meet, to meet our financing obligations.
Thank you.
Any other? I do have one. I didn't, maybe I missed it. I didn't hear any funding for potential solar garden. Is that in the budget for 2018?
Yeah, and here's the caveat with the solar garden. It's been our intent from day one not to use any electric great payer funds on the community solar garden. So it'll be totally financed by those that choose to participate in the solar garden.
Okay. So it is, it is a probability coming up before too long, then?
Correct. There'll be some marketing information going out, and we have some thresholds where we need 75% participation before we can pull the trigger and say, yes, we're going to build it.
Okay.
So we'll be gauging consumer interest, see if we get enough takers to put the solar garden in.
All right. Thank you.
Daryl, do you have a site for that?
We do. Would be, I think this is coming before February 3rd council meeting, February 5th. P&amp;Z has approved a site. It's behind Ag Advantage in the industrial park. I understand it's an undesirable spot there as far as business access, who would build there, and it's been vacant since Park opened, so. Worked with James and Bill for a while to try and figure out a good spot for it, and that's what we came to.
Daryl, I'm looking at a pie chart on page 14, and I understand energy sales to municipal, residential, commercial, but I don't think I understand what general power is. What does that mean?
It'd be our large industrials. So every community is a little different. Another town our size would be Indianola, and they have one industrial customer. We have 77. So our makeup of customers is certainly different. You know, if there's one thing that, that the bond people probably ding us on is that we have a lot of large industrials, and if we lose one, what would happen to Waverly Utilities? We have ratchets built into our agreement so we wouldn't feel immediate impact if we lost a large industrial customer, but every community is different. As you can see, industrial takes up more electricity than the residential side based on those pie charts.
Yeah, thank you.
So Daryl, where do places like the hospital come in? Are they in, are they in general? Or?
I believe they would be, yes.
Okay. So it doesn't have to be manufacturing or industry, it could be something like that.
Yeah, there's thresholds, Kurt, 100 KW and more for general? 100 kilowatts demand would put them in the large industrial customer base.
So does Whorfburg College fall into general or are they commercial or where do they go?
I believe they're a primary metered customer, so they have one meter, and we drop it off to the college at that point. So their distribution system is theirs. We just drop it off across the street from that new substation. They take it from there. So they're a little bit different and a unique customer in that they're a primary metered customer.
Hmm.
But again, they still pay us a demand charge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Casey reviewed both the utility and electric utility and the communications, so on to number three, Resolution 1802 authorizing the acquisition of real property for the Cedar River Parkway East project. Entertained a motion?
I'll move Resolution 1802 authorizing the acquisition of real property for the Cedar River Parkway East project. Acquisition for the following locations, SVS Properties LLC's property of parcel two at 2400 East Bremer Avenue for $500 with provisions that the company contribute funds to the project for the construction of a driveway approach from the parkway. GMT Corporation's property of parcel three at 2112 East Bremer Avenue for $500 and the replacement of an existing driveway with a relocated concrete driveway from the parkway to the facility parking area. Kendall and Kim Fox's property of parcel six at 1005 12th Street Southeast for $139,555 and the provision that the city relocates the existing concrete driveway. Renee Loy's property of parcel eight at 806 12th Street Southeast for $3,506 and Michael Lowhead's property of parcel nine at 1002 12th Street Southeast for $17,244.
Okay. Motion? Second? Motion made and seconded. Council discussion.
I have a comment and a question. My comment is, I think that Edie deserves a throat ludge for reading. I was going to read it, but I didn't have a throat ludge. My question is, it sort of jumps out to me that the Fox property is a considerably larger amount than the others. Bill, is there a reason for that?
It's a lot longer, so it's more right-of-way.
This was probably in the material and I missed it, but what, do you have a proposed closing date for acquiring the property?
Well, we were shooting for February 1st, which may or may not happen with all of them. We were looking for mortgage releases to be, when you get a partial release, you have to ask permission to release only a portion of the property from the mortgage, and we're working on those, and those have been a little slow to get back, so.
Okay. Part of that is because of the next resolution, I know that we're dealing with time constraints, so.
Yes, we can, we can get that done within the next 30 days and probably less than that.
Okay, thank you.
Bill, do you think you could put up on the overhead of the map? We had some requests from people who just wanted some help visualizing where the project is. Or maybe, I don't know if Mike's got it.
You mean the map of the project?
Yes, of where these properties are and how they fit with relationship to.
I don't have one with me, I'm sorry.
I think that would be helpful in future discussions. We just had some people who were confused about where this is and how it fits in with other roads and bike trail, et cetera.
Is that something that could be put on the city's website for folks to get access to?
Absolutely. We can certainly do that.
Mike often has maps. No? Okay. Just checking.
She has no maps.
I guess to explain it, if you head towards the soccer field, you eventually won't stop. It'll continue on and come out next to GMT and the artesian earthworks with a slight turn towards the end. So that is our goal, and again, we will try to provide more maps, more visuals as we move forward. I know some things have been talked about, but that's the best way to explain it. If you head past soccer fields, someday you won't stop.
And that will be two-lane?
Yes. Yes. It is, it is a city street. A lot of people call it a highway, et cetera. It is a two-lane city street, same as it currently is now, just going further, so.
Yeah, I think there's some, I've had a couple of conversations with people, they think it's four-lane.
Uh, no.
So I think that's an important point of clarity, yeah.
This is not a four-lane interstate racetrack, whatever certain people want to say it is. It is a two-lane city street, no different than any other city street, just longer and across the nice big bridge in Mille Lave, so.
And do we know what the speed limit will be on it? I've had that question, too.
I guess we'll have to determine, but right now it'd be 45. I don't see why it would be different than what it currently is, so probably 45.
Except that, except that on the west side, it is four-lane in parts?
Three-lane.
Well, three-lane, yeah.
But if you get all the way to the end, it will become a three-lane with a turning lane by GMT Corporation, et cetera, but the stretch at hand will be two-lane throughout, other than that small piece at the end.
And part of the, the soccer complex is actually 35, so up towards the west end is 35, so.
When you get closer to the corner there.
What's that, Mike?
It's 45 the whole way.
Oh, the whole way? I thought I saw a 35 sign there.
The very far west end where it makes the curve.
Yeah, yep, okay. Thank you. Any other questions, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Drankow?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Passed 7 to 0. Item number four, Resolution 1804, awarding the winter tree cutting for the Cedar River Parkway East Improvements Project. Entertained a motion?
I will move Resolution 1804 awarding the winter tree cutting for the Cedar River Parkway East Improvements Project to Benton Sand and Gravel of Cedar Falls, Iowa for the bid amount of 21,500.
Second?
Second.
Council discussion.
Will this impact any usage of the trail system?
I'm trying to think, are they going to be laying those next to the trail, do you know, Mike, offhand? Are we going to be having any issue with those covering? Because I think they're just going to take them down, but not necessarily remove them right away, so.
During the actual work, we'll have to coordinate the area off for safety, but the intent is not to pile them up on the trail, but to keep the trail clear.
When will they be doing it, Mike?
Well, the window had been February 6th to March 31st, but we're going to have to work with the contractor to adjust that now, so.
Because we postponed it from last week?
No, we don't have the property.
Oh.
So it has to be done by March 31st.
To comply with the bats that are possibly in the trees that we've not seen, but there could be one, so we have to possibly comply with that by the 31st. Apparently, April 1st is when the big swarm comes and they just, that's where it hits, at least, that's what they're telling us, so. Spring break. It could be, I don't know what it is, but that's the deadline is the 31st. And so once we complete the negotiations, the sooner the better in a sense, we can move that forward, as Mike has said, and try and get this accomplished as quick as possible, but the 31st will be that deadline.
Sorry, go ahead. My question was, would they wait to start this project until all of the parcels were owned, or would they do some of them just on the property that we owned and then wait to do others as we were closing the sales?
We need to take trees down on everything but artesian, so we could wait on artesian if we had to.
So they could do parts of it in a sense? It depends on how efficient it is, if you're kind of leapfrogging around. We'd like to do stretches at a time, just for quickness.
My concern is just to make sure that they don't get started before we've had a chance to go through the whole budget process on this, because I still have extremely deep concerns about how this is going to affect the budget, and I don't want us to be laying trees down, that they're going to be sitting there for five or 10 years because they're not going to be cleaning the trees up, they're just going to be taking them down. I want to make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row before they start knocking trees down.
And as we kind of talked about, we'll be through the entire budget and then some by February 3rd, the second Saturday. There's almost no possible way we'll have this all wrapped up by February.
All right.
There's, there was no chance of that, even if we had everything settled, we still have to get closing dates. We're talking probably maybe mid-February. I would say it'd be reasonable to start the process of closing out the properties, so we will have everything figured out by then.
You make me feel much better, thank you.
I appreciate that.
And disposal of all the trees and brush, et cetera, will be up to Benton's, is that?
Yeah.
That's my understanding? No?
No, their job is to lay them down. They can certainly salvage them, but as far as doing the cleanup, that's all part of the primary contract.
Most efficient way would be probably to burn it, would it not on-site, depending on where it goes?
There, right, so assuming everything proceeds forward, it would be the prime contractor on the grading paving bridge project that would take care of the cleanup and disposal. Given the sheer volume of wood debris, the most efficient, effective way of disposal is to burn it, and the location for that would be the large detention facility. In the event that, for whatever reason, the project does not move forward and the trees have been felled, then we would have to come back and do, at that point, we don't felled the trees unless we own the property.
Yeah.
Okay. So we would have to come back with a supplemental contract to do the cleanup and disposal of them at that point.
Right, very good, thank you. Any other discussion? Not? Roll call vote, please.
Angus?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Motion passed, 7 to 0. Thank you. Item number five, Resolution 1809, setting the public hearing date to approve the sale of Right-of-Way/Greenway adjacent to former Marx Repair Property at 1802 4th Street Southwest to facilitate real redevelopment. Entertained a motion?
I'll move Resolution 1809, setting public hearing date to approve the sale of Right-of-Way/Greenway adjacent to former Marx Repair Property at 1802 4th Street Southwest to facilitate redevelopment for February 5th, 2018 at 7 o'clock PM in council chambers at City Hall.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion.
Now, I wanted to be clear, they're still going to be responsible for the water runoff and kind of maintaining that, so I believe that this green space is where the water runoff currently is, and that will still be in there even after they kind of build into that area.
The pipe comes underneath 4th Street and drains into that area, and then it is carried down to the waterway to the west. It will still be a waterway, and they will still carry the water that comes underneath the road.
Will it still have the same kind of volume capacity or will that be diminished somewhat?
It's, it could be, it could be deeper and it could be wider. The way it is right now, it's pretty filled in. They're engineering what they need to do to move that waterway, and then they'll get that approved by the city when they, when they get that, to that point.
Again, if there's a, for some of the citizens that might be interested, maybe get a map on the website or something that we can project here, and so they're aware of where it is.
Well, I know if they sign on.
Again, if there's a, for some of the citizens that might be interested, maybe get a map on the website or something that we can project here, so that they're aware of where it is.
Well, I know if they sign on to the agenda itself, there are a lot of maps within that document itself that we're talking about, from the schematics to the actual highway vision of it, to the marked-out parking lots, and there's a lot of visuals in the item we are talking about if they log in to look at that, whether it be your website or otherwise.
I will bring those to the meeting when we do the public hearing. I'll have those, so we can put them on the overhead.
All right, very good, thank you.
There isn't really a key on those maps to what the blue lines are and the yellow lines and the, that would be helpful.
Resolution, any other council discussion? Hearing none. This should be a roll call vote, Carla.
Yep.
Call the roll, please.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Wodstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number six, Resolution 1810, approving the contract agreement between the city of Waverly and the State Historical Society of Iowa for the State Historic Preservation Office Department of Cultural Affairs Certified Local Government Grant for Scholarships to the National Historic Preservation Conference Forum 2018. Motion, please.
I move Resolution 1810. Do you want me to read the whole thing again? Okay, sorry. Just trying to be efficient.
That's why everyone was...
Okay, sorry.
I wasn't going to say anything.
Just trying to have an efficient government. Moving Resolution 1810, approving a contract agreement between the city of Waverly and the State Historical Society of Iowa for the State Historic Preservation Office Department of Cultural Affairs Certified Local Government Grant for scholarships to the National Historic Preservation Conference Forum 2018 for a cash match of $200.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion, please.
I just have one question. It's $200 per person, correct, and there are two people going, is that right?
It's 850 dollars, and there's a $200 match that has to be done locally.
Right. For two people, 200 each.
Yes, I think, well, actually, it's more than 200 each.
Oh, okay.
But I think they have multiple people going, and they may share some of that, so I don't know how they're doing it. Because this is the state conference, but it's also the national conference this year, so it's particularly important that the members, as many members that want to go can go to this conference, and they wanted to apply for as much as they could get in scholarships from the state to send our members. They've done such a good job in the last, how many years, in establishing districts? We're pretty well-known for having multiple districts, and I think they want to be down there, and I think they should.
No, I think it's a great idea. It was just, I think it's, well, at least the way I read the materials, I thought it was ambiguous about how much per person and how many people were going, but.
Sure.
And the answer to that is you don't know.
The cash match, it's 850 that they're using, so it must be, it might be $425 per person.
Okay.
And then we have to pay $200 cash match, which they can either take out of the budget or they can pay themselves.
Except that I think here it says that we're taking it out of the budget, if I'm reading the resolution.
I wanted to authorize...
Not that it's a big deal, but again, I'm just going to make sure.
I wanted to make sure that it was authorized to do that.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Rothie?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Wodstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Resolution 1810, approved. Reports from the boards and commissions, monthly financials, any comments that need to be made about that? December 12th, or December 2017, monthly financial. Everything seems to be in order. Staff comments?
I do believe we have a few, sir.
Hi there. Candlelight Ski is the 27th of January, that's an annual event, 17th annual event, from 5:00 to 7:00. You have a choice, you can cross-country ski, you can snowshoe, or you can walk, it's free, we'll have Nestle's Hot Cocoa at the end with a bonfire, and if you want to help out setting up, show up at 3:00. The Park Skies will be grooming the trail for the event, so hopefully the skiing and the snowshoeing will be good. Last year we had over 100 people, so nice event. We'll cancel it if the windshield is below zero, forecasted to be below zero at 3:00 PM. Secondly, this is the time of year that we send out letters for people who don't shovel their walks. So if you haven't shoveled your walks, and we get a complaint, it's complaint-driven, you'll get a letter from us. We give you 48 hours after a snow event, and if you know some, an address that hasn't shoveled their walks, we'd be happy to look that over. Lastly, sledding hill and ice skating rink, they are both up and operational. The sledding hills at the golf course, please go off the east hill, not the north hill. The north hill's got fence around it, so that you don't go down that, that's a little bit more dangerous. Follow the rules and wear safety equipment. Ice skating rink is in Pelican Park off the backwaters of the river. There are two rinks there, one's just for general skating, and we have hockey goals in the other. I see six to eight people playing hockey there when it's not 45 degrees below, and that's all.
Okay, any other staff comments? Chief S. Mr. Purcell, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to put it out again, we are currently taking applications for, which will be our ninth annual Citizens Police Academy. So if anybody wants to attend that, they are Thursdays, they'll be kicking off February 8th. It is a 10-week program, which I know it sounds like a lot, but we hear from a lot of citizens, when they're done with the course, that they can't believe how fast it went. We try to make it as entertaining as possible. You'll get to handcuff me. We offer, we offer people to get tased, we give demonstrations. There were all but one of our females last class. I think we had five females and two males that volunteered to get tased. So it was a very exciting class, and we do not just stay in the classroom, it's active as much, we do defensive tactics, we get down to the Hawkeye Community Range, we'll do firing of our weapons, and it's, the idea behind it is to look behind the badge, and we're an open book, there's no questions that are not answered, and we're taking applications until the 29th of this month, and so pass along to your friends, willing to take, council members. That's it.
Rich, how many, what's the maximum number you can take, and is there a charge to the participant?
There is no charge. We run this just through our normal budget. When we do the budget presentation, you'll see a line on it for it, and we do 12. It's a good number for seating, and then when we're walking around with groups, it's a good number.
Okay.
I think that's all our comments, sir.
All right, very good. City council comments. Brian?
Today we celebrate Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday and reflect on his legacy, as well as the state of race relations in our country. I would like to think that the race relations are pretty good in Waverly, but the truth is that my opinion doesn't matter much. I've never been on the receiving end of housing discrimination or racial profiling. But what I can say is that Waverly needs to continue to be a welcoming community to its new members, whenever they, wherever they come from. Many small towns in Iowa are shrinking, but Waverly is growing. We are not growing thanks to some power outage-caused baby boom, but because we have new people moving into Waverly every month. As a community, Waverly needs to be welcoming to people from all backgrounds, whether they are black, or white, or Hispanic, or Asian, or Muslim, or Hindu, or atheist. Everyone needs to be welcome in our community.
Thank you. Rod?
None tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Jim?
Just thanks out to the streets crews for getting out and getting the streets taken care of for us. They always are working extra for us when we have these events, weather coming in.
Edie?
None for me tonight, thank you. I want to second what Brian said. I was thinking about Martin Luther King Day and how it's also a day of service, and one of his quotes is, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is what are you doing for others." So Waverly has a great volunteer spirit, and I would encourage people to get involved in one of the service organizations, like Exchange Club, Rotary, Kiwanis, Lions Club, you name it, we've got a strong volunteer spirit here in town, so I would encourage people to join up.
Dan?
I hope I don't jinx things, but again, as the snow starts to fall here, just remind folks to, if they can, shovel around their fire hydrants, those type of things, it does help the fire department out, helps the city out, they don't have to come back and do that, so my annual plea to adopt fire hydrants, and just a general comment that it's refreshing to have concise, thoughtful conversation around this table, and the mayor runs a very efficient meeting, and I think that's appreciated by myself, as well as a lot of the citizens, so thank you.
I just, I just want to thank Ann and Rothie for reminding us that it's actually possible to be too efficient as a council.
I don't think that's possible, thank you.
Adam, do you have any words of wisdom for us this evening?
I don't know if there's any wisdom or not. No, I just, I think you guys, again, I think you have great discussion, and it's a thorough meeting of great questions and great answers, and one of the observations, I guess, that comes to mind for me is that, and I won't necessarily call it a concern or anything, but it seems that, from the outsider over here looking in, it's more uneducated and not as much up to speed on what's going on with everything and the budget, but it seems like for the last two meetings, we're moving forward with the Cedar River Parkway, yet there's still a little bit of wondering if it's going to happen or not, I don't know, but it just kind of feels like over here that we're cutting trees down, and we're still not sure it's going to happen. So, but anyway, like I said, I don't know if that's good, bad, or indifferent, it just feels like it's kind of the direction that things are moving, and the only concern, I guess I would have, is I hope no trees get cut down until we know that it's going to happen. I'll lay there for a year or two.
Hopefully the council will make a wise decision on that, on that project when it comes. I would like to take this opportunity to thank James and Tab for the tour that a couple of us had, and...
Mike was in on it.
And Mike was there, yes. And, and on a Saturday, and seeing all the lights and bells and whistles on the fire trucks is quite impressive.
We weren't supposed to talk about that. One time, you go streaming on the street with that.
I have this one, yes.
Now they're all going to want one.
But, no, and then I had the privilege of attending the fireman's meeting last Tuesday evening to fire in some officers. Pleasant process, and again, I stayed for the whole meeting, and believe it or not, there is a lot of activity happens at that meeting the public's not aware of. What they refer to as truck check, about 20 minutes, and they split up into teams and check every vehicle and piece of equipment, and the lights are flashing, and the only thing that doesn't happen is the sirens go off, because I can't imagine eight or nine trucks with the sirens all blaring inside that building, but, no, I don't think they get, sometimes don't get the recognition that they really deserve for all of the efforts that they put into, and...
I would certainly add the fire department to the list that Ann had of the civic groups in town, because we're always looking for good candidates, so if you have an interest in that, get ahold of Chief Hopple or anyone that's on the department, and we can share that information with you.
Again, echo someone's statements about the snow removal. Crew was out bright and early, I was out somewhere around 5:00, shoveling my sidewalk so that I didn't get a letter. But, no, that's, just keep up the good work to the staff and citizens, again, put out the word to get involved, and we'll be looking for, we'll be looking for board and commission members before too long, so please keep it under advice. Any other comments, quick? If not, entertain a motion for adjournment.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion, mayor, meeting adjourned. Thank you.